Okay, thank you. We'll bring the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, January 21, 2020, and a nice cold evening. And our first matter is a public hearing. This is 16 HRR LLC, Faravekio, Lot Number Four. This is an application for a site plan, storm water pollution prevention plan, amended subdivision, clearing and grading limit lines, excuse me, steep slopes and tree removal permit approval, 16 Hollow Ridge Road.
Thank you. Just take a minute to pull up some other plans.
Yep. That looks great, that first project.
We should have a motion to open the public hearing.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
Good evening, for the record, Geraldine Tortavella, Ackerman Tortavella, and Maxine. With me this evening are Steve Gaetano and Michael Gaetano from G2 Design. John Kellard sends his regrets. He had a family emergency, so he was not able to join us this evening. We had planned to have him with us. I just, you tell me how, I mean, we've been before you a few times before. I don't see anyone here from the audience. I don't know how much you want us to get into it. I know it's a public hearing.
Just if there are any changes from what we saw last time, I think you would just highlight those, if any, I mean, if they're nonfind.
There are, there are no changes from last time. What we did in this last submission that was submitted right before the Christmas holiday was to provide some additional information that had been asked for before the driveway profile was prepared by Kellard Sessions. It had originally been done by the architects. Mr. Seeley had asked that the engineers do it, so we did provide that. We provided some additional details on the plans with respect to the water service and the location of a water meter pit. We have some details on the storm water retention system. There was some treatment that was added, so those details were just provided. The testing data for the, for the testing that was done of the soils for the storm water system, that's been added to the plan. We've added some notes. We have indicated on some of the plans, the location of the off-site intermittent water course drainage channel that we had had a lot of discussion with. That's the one across the street. The question was, did it throw a setback onto our property in an area that would interfere with the septic expansion area? And it does not. But we provided that information. And then we made some revisions to G2's plans and Kellard's plans to be consistent. There had been some inconsistencies in the past, and then also with the revisions that we made, we brought the G2 plans up to, up to date with the Kellard plan, so they are now conforming. So there's no, but then, been no substantive change in the design or the layout, just those additional details have been provided.
Okay. Good. Bob, did you have comments? And most of them, I think, were geared toward you and Dennis.
We had some minor comments. ST1, they provided the numbers, but I didn't see the calculations. So they're going to incorporate the calculations into the storm water report. That's ST1. ST2 standard, there are over 5,000 square feet of disturbance, so obviously you'll need a D E C permit for the erosion and sedimentation controls. Some minor comments on G1 with the driveway profiles. They should show the existing grades of 25 preventables, which John Kellard said he has no problem with. And G2 is basically showing the water surface line going out, and now it ties into the street on Hollow Ridge Road.
What'd you mean by the nioscoped? What was that?
Excuse me?
The M scope, I'm sorry.
The M scope. Basically, that's a magnetic presenter they use.
So it's not the hammer, it's a magnet?
Yes.
Okay.
And they use that to locate the service line, which is usually, obviously, B I P.
Right.
And then G3 are basic notes, which we put on the plan. I recommended that these conditions be incorporated under the planning board resolution as conditions of approval.
Right. Okay. Cool. Thank you. Dennis, did you have some comments?
I actually spoke this morning to Mr. Kellard. And so, we had agreement in that, you know, we're going to get sort of a better handle on, you know, being able to match tree to tree, just so that I could sort of do a Q and QC, obviously, and then come up with final, you know, A, replacement calculations, and then B, there would be additional work to the landscape plan, not just to focus on the, on the trees, which, you know, some of those could meet replacement requirements and therefore not be financial compensation replacement requirements, just actual tree replacement requirements. And he had asked if I was okay with, similar to what Bob said, if those would be, you know, resolution items. And I said, that's, that's fine with me. Obviously, I've seen that with some other similar developments, and that works, just so that we can, you know, just come to some agreement in the future, and they were fine with that.
Okay. And we're understood on the, one of the things that you, I think you've raised a couple of times, is the double stemmed and the triple stem trees and how those are measured, that the distribution or those.
Yeah, I, I swear, I always did it, and those count.
I think that's probably what we've always done.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Now, this might have been just a typo. This is not from Steve Coleman, when he went out in December of last year, right? It was December 15 of this year, that you were just out last week?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't tell me I wrote 2019 instead of 2000.
You did, but, ah. Hey, you have your own back page. Okay, good. Sabrina, you had some notes?
I just had one comment, and that was to remove one of the notes in the zoning conformance table, as indicated, to correct the development coverage with, when it wasn't with the shared driveway, that that's not necessary, because I did make the corrections and appropriately identify the shared driveway in the calculations stemming their problem.
Right, right.
And then some changes to the numbers that they had made previously. Yeah, I'm going to agree to amend those.
So your comments in terms of where they're over a little bit and under some, that includes your calculations for the driveway?
Correct.
Great. Okay. Super. Thank you. Okay. So the issues for us are what, the clearing and grading limit line?
The issue is the clearing and grading limit line.
Okay.
Another small one. I'm a little confused. When we look at the secondary expansion area.
Correct.
It looks like it's fighting for space with the swale area, which carries water off. You know, are we satisfied, you know, that they'll have enough space and the water rushing down will not be eroding cover soil over the septic system?
For the secondary area?
Yeah.
Bob?
Confused here. The one closest to the road, wasn't that removed to begin with?
Well, that's the original.
Geraldine, right?
The septic plan?
Yeah.
Let's pull up the plan.
Because we put on the swale years ago, and it wasn't meeting Worcester's criteria, and had to be moved to a different spot. Now, what, do you still have the new one up on top?
The new one up on top is the result of that, and they made the secondary one smaller. But to me, when I look at, I can't figure out from the drawing exactly where the secondary 100% expansion area ends and the swale begins. And it looks like they're very close.
How do you zoom in on that? That's probably what they would give a best one.
Mean large, that might be.
Zoom in on the lower left, I guess. That's the big concern. Expansion.
That's expansion area.
Right.
I don't, I'm unclear as to what its bounds are, because if you look at, there's a tree. This tree right here is at the top of the swale. So the swale is this line here, as I read it. And I think it is, might be okay, but this curly, this is a contour line thing, but it's, I don't let you know what the area is, whether it's the dash heavy, the heavy dark line or what, I just don't know.
Well, they should clarify that, because they got a similar clearing and grading line map, some meat to look at. And I will definitely take a look at that. And plus, the county will actually look at where the water's going to be going as well.
Good.
Because, you know, the county does not like, obviously, any water going over septic, so they will look that, look at that during their review as well.
Correct. And we've had preliminary meetings and review with the county, and they've done the testing. And the county has actually indicated which, we have more trees marked for coming out than we anticipate having to come out, because the county doesn't want any trees within a certain distance of, of pipes and lines. But my understanding was that, that that area, that swale, was not going to conflict with the septic area.
But again, I believe John said he has faith that he'll get the Phil waiver?
Yes, but I, I assume that's not comforting to you. I'm assuming, I'm assuming you want to know that it works if it ever has to be built. But yes, he is, he is confident. He said that emphatically, I think, at the last meeting, that he's confident that we will be able to get that.
Do you think those chances are enhanced because it's down, it's very accessible, it's down close to the road? So if they, it's close to the road, so if they have to build it out, it's, it's.
Yes. I mean, I made that call, that'll be one of their considerations, you know, how easily could that be built, if you need to build it in 25 years?
Remember when we looked at Brandywine, because it was very difficult access down the hill, and they said, no, you're going to do it now?
Right. And that's why they like to see the field commissions after the piece issue, they'll make, John will probably meet after with them, and they'll make an assessment and they'll make a determination on that. But you're right, that's the word, in light of the fact that it might not ever get built this way.
Right. Of course.
I mean, when I look at the proposed primary area, I see where the pipes are placed, so I can get a sense as to what's going on up there. And not much is, it's still a slope and everything else, and people have to make sure they mow the grass and keep the, you know, the ground covered. But down here, there's so much going on in the lower one. I, I see no pipes, probably don't have to draw them technically, but I don't have an idea as to where the edge is, and so therefore, I'm not really convinced that, that you've stayed out of the area.
Well, they should. Even though it's going to be an expansion, they should show the areas of the absorption fields nonetheless.
Okay.
So they will show that. And again, I have to review this prior to them accepting the, signing off on the conditions. And just make certain when they do the mapping, it's very clear where the absorption fields are. And make it very clear what was the existing clearing and grading, and what poses.
So that is information we could add to the plan as a condition of the.
Or maybe, if you can fit it in, I mean.
Yes, that would be condition.
Well, we might have to create a different sheet or a different.
Or an inset.
An inset, right.
Is the seven-foot dimension tagging two trenches? That's seven-foot minimum?
That's a minimum, that's a minimum distance from absorption field, absorption field centerline to centerline, seven feet.
Okay, but is that, are those trenches there, those dotted lines?
Yeah, they might be, probably.
And because there's little boxes, are they the boxes?
So right here?
Oh, thank you.
Sorry. You can see the numbers on here.
I'm just wondering if the, if right here, there's a box, and there's these dashed lines in there.
The box or the distribution box, and the dashed lines.
Is that what he was asking about?
Oh, is that then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they show the absorption fields, which are dashed, and then they show the distribution boxes, which are little squares.
So 518 is a, is a box?
Yes.
Okay. So then, the distance to the, to your least 15, 20 feet from the edge of the swale. Make any sense to anybody?
Yes. And the county does have minimum requirements, that you need to be from open swales, closed piping.
Okay.
And they'll look at that prior to them signing off on it.
Do you think we need any rip rap stabilization on that one wall, when it's closest to the, with the.
You know, I don't really get in the middle of what the county approves on that, unless affecting someone else's property.
Well, the water is. All right. Okay, I think that answers my question, but good to check it, though.
I actually have a question about that last point, about water affecting those properties. I was looking at the existing grades here, and having gone out there a couple of times to look at the site, this is, it's obvious from the grades, it's very steep slope here.
Tom? Excuse me. Thank you. Sorry, thank you. You're direct.
So I'm looking at the, at the, at the slopes and the water coming down this way. And in the grading for the secondary area, it seems as though that what we've done is created actually a slope going this way, right? And I'm just, I don't know whether I should be concerned about the water coming down here and collecting and ending up more on the adjacent property than it otherwise would be, than it is now.
What's going for Hollow Ridge Road, adjacent property?
I don't know what the address is.
Excuse me, if you're, if you have questions or comments.
Yep, we're at a public hearing, so we'll, we'll entertain them.
We'll entertain them.
You're just speaking in the microphone, though.
Yeah, you'll have to introduce yourself.
So I just, I, I don't know, it looks to me, I don't know whether the water's going that way anyway now, or whether we're collecting more water and sending it to the adjacent property by this, by the grade.
I'm the owner of the adjacent property, that's why I ask.
Does somebody have an answer for me about that?
Do we have? Like a.
Over here?
You can bring the microphone with you.
You need to say who you are.
Hi, Steve Gaetano, I'm the architect. So I didn't do this design, but Kellard's office did. How do we work this?
Press the button, but not in anyone's eyes.
Okay. So you can see the swale here.
Yeah.
And the grades are meeting the existing grades right above the swale.
Right.
This grade here is meeting the swale line at just about going to the center of it. So it's keeping the water drainage in the same area as the swale. It's not going outside of it.
I'm sorry, I actually don't see grades that represent the swale. I see grades that are stopping here, short of the property line. If it was a swale, you would be able to tell from the contours that, actually, I just don't see it in the drawing.
Could I walk up to this for a second?
Yeah, oh, sure, sure.
Take the microphone with you if you're going to speak.
It comes out.
So this represents the depression of the swale area.
Right.
You can see it continues.
I don't see it continuing. It looks like.
Right here, it's this line.
But that's offsite, isn't it?
It's offsite.
Yes, it is.
Right, that's offsite. But I guess the main water collection from this area, this depression, is right in here where the water actually exits the ground. So you do at times get intermittent water out of the swale. And the setback was 15 feet. So you can see where the ends of the trenches are, 41 feet from the distribution box, 38 feet from the distribution box. And all of that is setback 15 feet from the swale.
See, when you, when you were saying swale, I was, I misunderstood. I thought you were suggesting there was actually a swale along the property line that was collecting water. You're talking about the swale you're making in order to regrade for this.
Right, this is an existing swale.
Existing.
No, it's existing.
Well, that.
Now, that's what nature wants to do now.
Right. But the regrading.
I don't see it, but.
The regrading stops at the centerline of the swale, which is the natural course. Same here, stops here at the swale. This stops at the swale. I don't know what this line here is.
So the swale actually meets the property line right about here at this line?
Correct. Right.
And the only question I have is, are we collecting any more water and sending it next door, or are we collecting it in a way that has a same amount of water, but it's done in a way that creates more of an impact?
No, I don't believe so.
Where do we have, there's some pipes here, I think, shown, right? Stone swale. Do they proceed any further than what we see in the drawing, or are they truncated here? Is it truncated because this is what the drawing is, and we don't see what's on next door?
I'm not quite sure what you're speaking of. Show it on the back there.
These right down here.
Well, the stone swales that were put in many, many years ago.
Right. Do they go along the road further?
Yeah, that goes further into the road.
Okay, so it's just truncated because it's the drawing?
Yes, it goes further down. There was, there was some water that we hit during construction years ago, and I didn't want it coming out on the road, so we had to mark that diversion swale. And it does come further west.
Right. Okay, good.
It's just not shown on the map.
Okay, good. So will it be collected, even if it's, goes off, it'll go down the hill and go into the storm swale?
The water comes down like this, and then it hits the swale, and it goes off here, then at least some of it's going to go this way.
Well, the water flow predominantly is going from the top of the page to the bottom of the page.
You mean like from here to here?
That's correct.
Even in the swale, the stone swale along the road?
Yes.
Because the road goes down there.
Yes.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. The waters, where they bend, it goes down this way. But when you get over here, the water isn't going to go that way, it's going to go this way.
Yeah, the water flows perpendicular to the contours.
Right. So over here, it's going this way, right? By and large. I mean, these are a little closer together here, so it's sort of drifting over this way, and then it hits the swale, which I assume has been eroded, created by erosion.
Mm-hmm.
And then it does go off the property line, but then this barrier down here catches a lot of it.
All incorporated, and that ultimately ties into the closed drainage system at Hollow Ridge Road.
Okay. Fair enough.
I'm sorry, which way is north?
Excuse me?
Come on up, come on up, yeah, sorry. You have to introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
We keep a record, so.
Hi, that's fine. Hi, I'm Jennifer Stewart. I am the owner of 24 Hollow Ridge Road. I'm curious as to what is north on the plan that's shown. So I would like to know where my.
Straight up.
North?
And I know that my.
Straight up in the story. So that property, I guess, is you.
This way.
You go this way up the hill?
Yeah.
When I was in the mound a little bit, so she would see this.
That would be helpful, thank you. Appreciate that. And I know that my neighbors are joining momentarily as well. They're at 22.
So are you directly to the south?
Yes.
So when you, when you come off of Route 128, and you make a right, there's 124, 126, 120, let's see. I'm going to go closer because.
Do you have an aerial?
Well, we have an, there is an aerial.
Yeah, we do have an aerial. Mike, is that, which submission is that in?
You're looking for the north arrow, it's just, you know, another two inches, yeah.
Or I could walk closer to the screen.
Help us.
Can you bring up an aerial that shows some surrounding property, so you can see? Context. You got it.
No, no, no.
It's a site we submitted with these superimposed.
Right. Okay.
It was on the last submission.
And that 1225. Would you 1125?
Right.
1125, that's my daughter's. And I'm trained as an architect as well, so I love that. I presume it will only add value to the neighborhood, so.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
But I am downhill, so.
That's that one, right there on the right. This is, right there.
Okay, I'll show you. Yep. You got it, that's right. Yep. So that's me, those are my neighbors that are coming in, that's up there, which I knew that that would be. And my concern is just, I'm so downhill that when you take trees out and the drainage, I no doubt believe that this will be terrific, and I'm sorry on the microphone, but I want to make sure that the drainage, and when you take out trees, et cetera. Do you want me to go back to the mic?
If you have more to say, yes.
Sure. So I appreciate being here, and I see the site plan, and my concern really is, is that I'm downhill at 24 Hollow Ridge Road, and my concern is, I believe it's 22 Hollow Ridge Road is the address, is that correct?
16.
16, 16. 22 is my neighbor who's joining, okay. So I see on the site plan where the proposed property will be located. My concern is at 24 Hollow Ridge Road. When you take the trees out, the drainage, et cetera, what happens downhill? My septic is up in the yard there, I have five acres, so.
I think, as I understand it, most of this will not be cleared. This will be untouched.
Okay.
It's, I don't know where the property line is.
Clearly not on my property, but the property, yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm inaccurate there.
Yeah.
But even in here, this is not proposed to be cleared. The septics are going up here.
Agreed.
Up there, so they've changed it, so the septics are going up higher, away from you, and uphill from the house.
Yes.
So that will cause less clearing, because in the, in the prior application, and what the applicant's trying to do is get a waiver for clearing the secondary expansion area for septic, and if they're successful, that means that none of this will be cleared either.
Got it.
So it'll still be treed, wooded, as is.
Yes.
So I think they have, and I don't know if you've already done it, but they were the so-called swale that we've been talking about, whether or not that will be cleared, you know, within, we talked last time, what, maybe what, a three-foot.
These are my neighbors at 22.
Okay. Three or four-foot swath, you know, just to put the piping in for the expansion, if you have to put the expansion, if you have to be put in.
If it's ever needed.
Right, right. Or if it's needed, or if the county doesn't give you a waiver upfront.
And we're showing a 10-foot trench, just because that's what the town engineer wanted us to show, because that might, sorry, excuse me.
Yep, yep, yep.
We're showing a 10-foot trench that goes down that hillside, only because the, the town engineer and, and the staff wanted us to show a worst-case scenario, but that is not our intention, and we're going to try to keep it as narrow as possible to reduce the, the number of trees that have come down, and as, as well as reduce the amount of disturbance. Also, just this section of the property, and I'm being inexact, so don't hold me to exact pointing, but there's a conservation easement on the property as well. So there's a significant section, right, that is, that is precluded from disturbance.
So just to reiterate, my question was, because my neighbors are here, was that, my concern was where said property, 16 Hollow Ridge Road, adjacent to 24 and 22, my concern was on downhill, and when I read the memo, or the invitation, was that there would be, you know, drainage, sewage, and, you know, treed, you know, removal, et cetera, and so I was concerned as to what that might be. I'm not going to answer for the, the group that is here. However, they described for me what they were looking to do. So I don't know if you want to recap by any chance, or, or if you want to say anything.
We definitely have some stuff.
We have.
You want to make some comments or questions?
Sure. Come on up.
Sure. Hi, Tom Barrett, B A R R E T T, we're the resident of 22 Hollow Ridge Road.
So we think, if I can point this correctly, is this home right up here?
Right.
Okay.
So that's me. We shared, we've been in front of you guys before, that common road, as you can see, We shared, we've been in front of you guys before, that common road, as you can see, that leads up to the property. A couple of concerns, the biggest one, I think for me, is the plan that I saw didn't necessarily address how to bring all the utilities to the site. Right now, the power is left on the south side of my driveway, has to be brought to the site, I didn't see anything on the plan that addressed that. And what I'm worried about is, if the applicant is gonna do that work himself, or is he just gonna turn that work over to the utility? If I, if I think I have it right, the utility is obligated to bring it to the site, and that's something...
To the property line.
To the property line.
Right.
And that's a problem for me, because it's gotta be hand-dug.
Why does it have to be hand-dug?
Because of the driveway, and the, and the width between my planting and the curve that's there, it's a very narrow space. I just can't see anyone getting in a machine in there without wrecking dozens of my trees that I just put in, that you guys wanted, so. That's number one. Number two, I believe the water is off of the Hollow Ridge, instead the plan shows it up off the common driveway. I hope that the engineers got that right.
Sure.
So... If they can pull up that site plan again. Okay, so, um, excuse me, I just have to get to... So I, I am not the engineer, I'm the attorney, the engineer had a family emergency, couldn't be here this evening, but the, to address the water issue, we have shown the water line, and it is along this edge, it is along the common driveway, and it was identified by the engineers in consultation with the town water department, and there's a water meter pit that's required and, and other improvements, and we have located it in that proximity. But this is, has to do with the location of the water line, was a question that was asked. In terms of the installation of the other utilities...
I'm sorry, I'm gonna challenge you on that, I don't think you have that right. The water main is up...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I hate to do this, but you really need to be at the microphone?
Yeah, so, kind of lived this for many years, and I'm pretty sure that the water is not up there. You have to come off a hollow ridge, as I did, up the hill, and then the water comes into the back of my property, so I'm assuming that it's probably better for you, but it's off a hollow ridge, it's not off the common road.
You're saying, why, yeah, the water main, we put a water main there years ago when Faravekio came in here, up along Hollow Ridge Road.
I know, but she's saying that it's off the common road.
The driveway.
The driveway, it's not.
It'll be extended.
You'll have to go from, I suspect, oh, hold me too, but I think, and you didn't get it M-scoped yet, but I believe you'll have to go from your residence up the common driveway, out to the water main located in Hollow Ridge Road.
Right.
That's why you need a water meter pit, because anytime you're more than 250 feet away from the water main, you need a water meter pit as per W.
Because of the length?
That is correct.
Of the rung.
That's why it's critical to M-scope out there and see what is there, and I guess Mr. Barrett's saying there's no water, so.
Yeah, not in the, not in the shir.
So you'll have a pretty good run to go all the way up, I don't know what that distance is from your property line up to Hollow Ridge Road, but it's a pretty good distance.
It's the same as mine, I had to put a pit in, a whole bit, it's, we put in a two-inch line with the backflow and everything, so. It, it's easy, but you just had it wrong, which scares me, I, does your engineer know what he's doing?
Yeah, I, I believe he does, but I'm, I'm not understanding why you, you say he has it wrong, he's extending it up the common driveway from Hollow Ridge Road.
No, Hollow Ridge Road is down here, to go to the far, there it is.
I'm on Hollow Ridge Road.
That's a common driveway.
Right, but it swings around, and the common driveway...
It does not.
No, Tom, Hollow Ridge is not off of Hollow Ridge Road?
Yeah, so if you could pull back, yeah, see, the common drive goes into Hollow Ridge.
That's my point.
But it does not come off that way.
Regardless, I have to...
The site plan helps, go back to the site planning.
Please.
Regardless, if you tie in.
No talking unless you're at the mic.
All right, I'll go up at the mic.
Because we don't, the record is incomplete.
That's fine, hi, could we take, zoom in to the site plan, please, so we could see in context the adjacent properties, and where's Hollow Ridge, common driveway, et cetera?
You mean the area?
The area.
Yep.
Isn't this Hollow Ridge over here also?
Yeah.
Is it Solid Ridge Road?
Yeah, it's it.
All right, so they're going from the driveway to Hollow Ridge Road, that's what they said.
What I'm saying is, here's where you'd come up, is basically...
We're not coming up that way.
We're not coming up that way.
That's where the main is, why not just come straight up?
Coming up the driveway.
Is there a main here also?
There is a main there.
That's where they're coming from.
But why would you come all the way up here when you can come right here?
Because it'll disturb all this other area in terms of woods and all that kind of stuff, and, and steep slopes?
Well, I had to do the same thing.
Well?
I, I'm just trying to tell you that I, there's no water that comes up there, or else I would've grabbed it.
So you came, you came up directly up, up here, up the hill?
Correct, I was told that, I'm, I'm right over here and I had to come up this way, but my pit is right by the hydrant. So I, I, but I think that the engineer needs to consult with either Campbell, or the guy that I used lately, Campbell was a bit of a problem for me, because he had some things that were wrong, but I, I think the engineer needs to, to reevaluate this.
Can I say, can I say one thing?
Sure.
The whole reason, I don't know who told you to come to your property, but maybe it was a shorter route than going up the common drive out to Hollow Ridge Road, just by the way, that water main does go all the way around, I was here when they put it in, I did all the plans for it, so.
Yeah, so this way up, right?
That water main wraps all the way around, yes.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just saying that it does not come up here.
No, we never said it, we never said it did.
The service line that we would be installing would be along the common driveway from Hollow Ridge Road, from the main at Hollow Ridge Road.
So you're proposing to, to pick it up there and rip up all this road and bring it in this way?
Yes.
Instead of coming up here?
And ripping all this up together?
Then you have to rip up the woods. Got that, guys, but what, this is asphalt, why rip all that up? Asphalt's easier than woods.
It's less of an impact.
Less impact.
It's a less of an impact, so whereas when you put your house in, it was, it was, it wasn't as steep, maybe not as steep of a slope, it wasn't as many trees, it was easier rather than going from the driveway, but in this instance, due to the conservation easements on the property, the steep slopes and the existing tree coverage, it makes more sense to come from hollow, down the common driveway to the home.
Okay, so if I just address what's on the plan, which is, I guess, what I should be doing, it shows that the water main has been brought up, and you're picking it up right there, I'm challenging that, saying that that's not the case, that the work has, if you're, if you're not all saying that you're gonna dig this up, it has to be shown on the plan, you gotta go back through my, my neighbor's property, because all three of us share this, it's, it's our common, you're gonna have to... Yeah.
Do you know where this house draws its water from, is it directly from the street, or is it coming?
I don't know.
So I just have a question, if that is the, Deborah Barrett, Tom's wife, 22 Hollow Ridge, so my concern is really, even though that's a shared driveway between the Nuklises, which is 18, the house that you were just inquiring where the, where they get their water, and us is 22, that is a very narrow shared driveway for the new house as well as ours, and I'm trying to, I'm very concerned about the traffic coming down that way when I'm gonna be leaving, because it's not a straight, it's very, it's a very difficult, a couple of times there's been a car coming to look at the property, and I'm on the right side of the road, they're not expecting me, I'm not expecting them, and...
Are you talking about the construction?
The construction, yeah, it's been a little busy with people checking out the house, and prior to, I don't know when they, you know, the new owners purchased it, but that's my concern, but now I'm hearing that, you know, there might be some disturbances with, if they have to pull the water line from Hollow Ridge, that's our only way out, I mean, that's our only way out of that property with little kids.
Why would that be a problem, I don't understand.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
And maybe I'm misunderstanding, but if you're gonna be digging up that area and it's gonna be closed, we cannot sit in the house.
Nobody's gonna close the driveway.
It would be a very temporary situation, usually, I mean, I don't know what the scope is in time frame, but a week?
The trench for a water main is probably gonna be two feet wide, the pipe is two inches wide, so we can have the contractor, we can have the applicant submit plans, to make certain during construction, that your property and your neighbor's property will always have access.
Have access, but also what about, like, what is the recourse, and this might be a little premature, and I apologize if it is, I'll come back, but what is the recourse if, I can't leave, we can't leave because there's a truck backing up, because you can't turn on that turn, you have to go in one, I mean, we see it with UPS trucks all the time.
The applicant's engineer submit a construction drawing.
Okay.
Showing how they will prepare and dig that and construct it.
And why is this...
Will always leave in access for the company, that's an imperative thing they have to do.
It's a 20-foot...
And the best way to do is to have them submit plans for that.
Yeah, if it's, if they're, and just because we've had it, because our neighbors sometimes get fresh direct, and if they can't go in, they, they park right adjacent, a little further past that first driveway, and they actually have to back up, or I have to go over the curve to get by it, I, I mean, it doesn't happen that often, but it's not very wide, it's probably legally wide for two sedans, but, you know, if there's a truck, a truck can't stay parked there, and me allow access back and forth, and I think that, as a, my husband has constructions, but as a homeowner with children, I need to be able to get out, I need my kids to be able to feel safe walking from the bus stop, which is at the end of the road, up that driveway, you know?
Well, I, I don't think this will be a, it will be inconvenient.
Of course, yeah.
Is it, will you actually be going, is the plan to come up the middle of the, on one side of the asphalt, or is it going off onto the right of way, I, I don't know what the plan is, maybe we can look at, make sure it's going along the edge.
They have to put the water so many feet away from any type of communication lines, electric lines, so they'll have to do an asphalt on that to see where the existing utilities are, and then put in...
So we'll have an opportunity to see those drawings and then comment, or is this the time to do it?
Well, we don't have it, so this is not the time to do it, so I, I think what we normally do on something like this is, is, is a condition of approval, so it's, I don't know what the arrangement would be down at the building department to actually see these later on before...
Well, we can make it a condition of prior tuitions of the tapping permit.
Okay, so what would the...
Well, they'd have to submit a full set of plans to demonstrate how they're gonna build this without impacting the two neighbors.
So the question, I'm sorry, the question would be, the operative question, is what constitutes impact to the neighbors, is it an inconvenience, or, I mean, how do you, how does one measure that?
Access, they're making sort of access, and they deny them access, and safety.
Yeah, but you can deny access 15 minutes.
Deny them access like they literally cannot get in and out.
Correct.
As opposed to, as opposed to it being inconvenient, because you have to drive around a truck, or you're concerned about safety.
Or momentarily.
That's what I'm looking for, is to...
And those driveways, by the way, when they put them in, those are common driveways, and we do have codes for an appendix too, of the chapter 113, I believe the first run, because that serves three houses, the first run is about 16, then it drops down to 14, then it drops down to 12, so these are not your minimum driveways, so there is, should be ample room, but we will definitely take a close look at the plans to satisfy your concerns about access.
Okay, yeah, and I understand totally inconvenience, it, it's more truly just the access and safety of the kid, so even if I get like a schedule, like maybe between 7:30 and 8, you know, like, I'm open to that, it was just, that's my concern is...
And we can put notes on the plans that the contractor shall notify you, so you have some sort of notice.
Yeah, and then we can leave the, I'm willing to do what I have to do, it's just more the safety.
That's very fair of you.
Okay.
So the next question is, if it turns out that literally there's no way to do this, so that you have access, that they would have to block off the road in order to do it, and the reasonable alternative is to not put the water line in the road, but have it come up the slope?
If it's a major...
Does that end up back in, before us again?
Yes.
You can put a condition in there, where if they can't get it through the roadway, and has to come through the property, then I have to come back to the planning board to look at the environmental impact.
So we'll condition it that way?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, to see, it just seems like there's a lot of disturbances on, on, not even our property, but on the 18 and 16, and 24, yeah, so it, it seems that that might not be the best way, but you guys can look at it.
So are there possibly four sets of utilities going in the road, water, cable, telephone, and electric, three?
Yeah, they usually put the telephone, electric...
I'm assuming there's no poles on the driveway, right?
No.
So you have three things that have to get opened up to be buried.
All the telecommunications are in ready, but they have to, and asphalt to see where that is, I mean, that was built many, many, many years ago.
Yeah, and they're not all the same, there's not like a utility section, it's, like my husband said, the con ed is like on our property, it's not even at the edge, it's, it's...
I believe there's no gas there, right?
We have, we have gas.
Can I make a suggestion, perhaps? One question I want to ask the board members is, do you feel as though we should, we should continue the public hearing, so that everyone has a chance to look at this once we get these plans, to make certain that we are, you know, we've done our due diligence and we're fine?
I see no harm in that.
And neighbors want the plans, too, I'd like to see the plans as well.
Well, when the application is submitted, it's all posted online, so...
But that's after the fact, no?
No, 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 prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's actually where I saw, so, but that's, appreciate that, Bob, that's something that we are hoping, you know, you showed up at previous meeting.
I, I think that, personally, I think that would be fair, but, well, if we do it on a, you know, short leash, and we get the information and right away from you folks, so that we don't delay you any further, and we get this thing done, but we, I think it, I think some issues have been raised here, and we don't have the drawings and the sketches that we're talking about, so I think it's, it's unfair that we continue, I think, continue the public hearing.
And at least give the engineer who, who designed the thing, an opportunity to speak to him as to what he thought was there, and...
Well, we're, that, we actually, our, the town engineers address that, because this could be M-scoped, so they're gonna find out exactly where these, these things are, because rather than guessing, this way we'll know.
They do have third-party underground utility companies that come out and locate that, so, they got the work cut out for them to show where the existing utilities are, and then they can decide where the proposed service line.
I, I've been marked out a couple times, they spray my driveway, and then they stake the, the line, the water line down the road to Hollow Ridge with the little white flags.
The flags, please.
So, but the other thing I was gonna, if the applicant wants to consider somebody who has tribal knowledge of the site, you can go back to Faravekio's project manager, who's still available, his name is Jerry DeCarlo, I don't know if this is the applicant here?
Yeah, well, yes, yeah, so, Michael and I.
Okay, so that I would recommend, he's relatively cheap, he's the one who put it in 10, 15 years ago, he, he knows where all this is, and most of us have hired this guy over the years to help with projects on, on our houses, so I'd recommend talking to the guy at least.
We have normally no advertising, but, you know, it's coming from the public.
This is not an endorsement, by the way.
Exactly, right.
I have another related comment, I would assume also, Bob, that not only is it a question of the safety and the accessibility, but it's also, if there are shrubs and other things that are along the side of the road, grass, all that stuff has to be replaced in kind, I would think, and that would be part of, of what we have in the words that we're about.
We can have them take pre-construction photographs, since it's going over two of the properties, to cover all the bases, in case there's any damage to adjacent landscaping that may have to be restored, it's always the best policy to take pictures.
Especially if we impose the landscaping requirement.
That is correct.
Yeah, it'd be good to protect it. That was one of my last comments, too, for the record.
Can I just add to that, if you're worried about landscaping, just try to take those pictures during the growing season, not like now, that's my only caveat.
Good.
Well, tough to do.
Snow.
Yeah, snow, and, are these shrubs or evergreens?
For my property, yeah, it's, it's clearly documented, and there's sprinkler lines as well, that were strategically placed, and they're all gonna get dug up now, so I, we just wanna be on the record that we hope the applicant works with us, not only in, in this form, but out in the field as well, because we have a whole bunch of logistical issues that my wife started to touch upon, and I can formalize for the, for Bob and others. But for the, for the record, the last part of what I saw was the applicant was seeking a review of, was the landscaping, do I have that right today?
Yeah.
Okay, so as part of that review, our review of that, we see that you've allowed him to go ahead and tree bank, he, he's gonna put money into the tree bank in lieu of plantings?
Well, if, if that's the case, it's because the, we, the applicant and the board couldn't locate appropriate spots for replanting, so if an applicant cannot do so, then they're obligated to make a contribution to the tree bank, there's, it's all, you know, in, in our code, it's all, it's a formula, and it's all based on the size and the diameter of the, of the trees that are being taken down.
So you couldn't come to terms on it, landscaping?
Excuse me a minute. How many trees are coming down, and how many are being replanted, roughly? You won't be held to the numbers, because the numbers are not...
The replanting is, the first plan conceptual showed eight, I think there were 96 or 97 trees tagged, but I, this is part of why we're gonna continue to clarify, because, what's their names, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the trees.
Alpine.
Alpine, I think they had listed that they were gonna propose to take down 77, they They tagged ninety-six as part of doing a complete survey, which is understandable, doesn't mean you're gonna take everyone you silver tag, uh, but I think I remember that number, seventy-six, seventy-seven, down at eight, as part of a, uh, lands, a preliminary landscape conceptual.
So there'd only be eight replaced?
Uh, that's what I saw, and to paraphrase, just for a call this morning, I got the impression, I don't know how many other areas were suitable for replacement, and maybe to expand on suitable, I don't have a context for it, but there, there could be reasons, I just know that that was mentioned to me over the phone by the engineer.
So one of the, one of the constraints here, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but, uh, what we're essentially doing mostly, this is true throughout the whole town, is that when we're, projects like this are being done, we're actually working in a forest, we're clearing a forest in order to put the building in. And to put a sufficient clearing so that people can not just insert a building in a forest, but a home in the forest, which means more clearance in order to have front yard, backyard, and all those things. So, um, the tree bank is a device by which, because you really, it's hard to plant trees in a forest, because it's already a forest.
I don't live...
So as a consequence, the tree bank is a, is a mechanism for the town to recapture some of the green which is being taken out and put it someplace else in town where it's, so it's not a question of not being able to come to terms with, on the landscape plan. It's actually coming to terms with the landscape plan, even though there may be some further refinement of it, uh, by this device.
It's like buying carbon, it's like buying carbon, replacing, yeah.
It's another way to look at it.
So Tom, my only point there was, yeah, is that he's held to the same standard that we are.
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I wouldn't, I, I would assume he would be, I, it sounds...
Because we were, I know my plan was scrutinized, you know, but yet I see very little plantings he's required to do, and it just felt like I'm in the same woods he's in, and you were able to come up with a, you know, an approved plan back and forth.
Do you, do you, do you have any objection, do you, have you looked at the landscape?
Absolutely.
And do you have any specific objections to it?
Oh, absolutely, well, it's...
Then you should share them with us.
Okay, and, and, do you want me to, I can mark up a, a plan?
Yeah, you can send that in, sure, we're gonna, we'll defer to the public hearing, so it'll be good to have that information, and again, this will give us the time, I think, for Dennis to also work with Alpine and the, uh, engineer to refine the planning plan that they're proposing anyway, and maybe, so that should happen anyway, we'll have that next time around. And in addition to trees, we can also incorporate shrubs, because the law incorporates shrubs as well, and I think those are a good combination, and perhaps, uh, we'll be able to come up with a program over the next... So I, I think, you know, this will give us the opportunity to buy...
Peter May, Peter May, I just have a question, sorry, Jennifer Stewart.
As soon as I start, as soon as I stop talking.
Sure, that's, um, I just wanna make sure you're not wrapping up.
You have to wait, you'll have to wait and see if he's just wrapping up. Maybe he will never stop talking.
It has happened, in any event.
I'll wrap it up after you, go ahead, please.
Okay, in any event, um, we have a couple loose ends here, so this will give us the opportunity to loose, you know, tie those together, uh, get this tree count down, so that you're, you and Alpine are all set on it, the engineers are all set on it. We'll have the detailed, uh, landscape plan, and we'll have that before us, along with the other information regarding the, you know, the cuts and the, and whatever we're doing on the utilities and the access to the water lines. So, uh, I, I think this will be a good opportunity to get that information. And the way it works here is, as Sabrina said, all this is available, you know, online, uh, very transparent, no secrets, um...
Can we get plotted prints, though? Because I don't have a printer like that.
You can buy them, you can, but they're, I mean, you can come into the town hall and look at them.
And, or buy them from the town hall? Can I walk away tonight?
I mean, it can ask the, ask the applicant if they wanna make it available for you.
We, we do make copies of that size for a charge.
I'm happy to pay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
As an architect, that's how I look at things, so thanks.
Okay. So, I mean, we can do that online, whatever, and, and, and those details, um, are, are there. So, okay, does that make sense? I mean, I don't know what the next timeframe is, what the cycle is.
Well, I think if we should ask the applicant the amount of time they think they need to submit.
Right, what do you think Geraldine? I mean, it's pretty straightforward, although I think you still have to do some meetings.
But to apply, though, if others have questions, how do you apply if there's still some outstanding questions? Sorry, Jennifer Stewart, S.T.E.W.A.R.T., I'm the owner of twenty-four Hollowridge Road.
Are you addressing the board or the applicant? You're supposed to address the board. I don't know if you've done these before or not, but...
Clearly not, but I'm here, and I'm an owner, and I'm not stepping away, and I'm happy to follow your process.
So, so the, there's a couple different ways that you can communicate.
Yeah, it starts, it starts by...
Okay, but I do get to speak.
You, you get to speak, but not when you want to, perhaps?
Okay, I'm gonna listen.
So there, there are two ways that you can communicate with the board. You can come and speak at a public hearing when the chair, chairman opens up the public hearing for the public to speak. The other avenue is you can submit in writing to the development department your questions, comments, or concerns that will be forwarded to the board, so they'll have a record of it prior to the public hearing.
All of those are part of our record.
Got it, so I received a letter in the mail about two days ago, that this was happening. It's the first time I've ever heard anything as a neighbor. So how do I become more informed?
Which is, which is, there's two ways you can become more informed, so we are required by law prior to a public hearing to notify neighbors and publish in the paper that a public hearing is going to occur.
Yep.
The, um, you can contact the town clerk's office, she will put you on an email list to be notified of all agendas and...
Her name is, please?
Christina Paves.
Okay.
Yep.
P A P?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
All right, and...
Okay, yeah.
Am I allowed to speak or no?
Yeah, you have another question.
I don't, I'm not in charge of the meeting.
I'm not, I, I don't, I don't know. I haven't been scolded since second grade when I was in Rockville School, and they threw a ruler, but, you know, it's only men, and they're white, so here we go. Uh, so, question to you then, I can buy plans, I can go online, I can check out what I need to check out, um, is this going forward then, or when's the next planning meeting? So I can put it on my calendar, please?
Uh, we were just going to ask the applicant that in terms of what the time was...
Until you, until you interrupted us.
Yes, right.
Before I can...
This is tough crap.
Before I can...
Ma'am, ma'am, you're about to be out of order and removed from the meeting.
And asked to leave.
From the room. Thank you, sorry, go ahead.
Um, before I can answer that, I just wanna get some clarification on what we're putting together. I, I understand refining the landscaping plan, um, I wanted some clarification on the utility installation. So is it that you're thinking the M scoping would be done for the next submission?
I would recommend to get a good survey from where you have the house, up the common driveway, showing all and any existing utilities that are, in the ground are ready, and going outside at least five, ten feet from the edge of the pavement to show any type of trees or vegetation as a good base map for Mr. Kellard to prepare and show proposed water service. Because I don't know what's in that common driveway, there could be gas service, I don't know if Mr. DeCarlo added any type of stubs, I do not know. There's a lot of research and effort and due diligence your engineer has to do to prepare a good as-built, to get a good base map, to show exactly where the service line can go without impacting the adjacent properties or the existing utilities.
Okay, so that, those, we're not assuming any of those as-bills already exist?
I do not believe so, I did not see it in any of the plan set, but I would highly recommend using, utilizing the services of a professional answer, it'll locate all that for you.
Okay.
So Mr. Kellard, as an engineer, can use it as a base map and auto cad, and develop a good set of plans, that's accurate.
For utility and, and for utility installations, what, what the end goal of that is, all right. I don't know how long that's going to take, so I can't comment on, on when we'd be prepared. I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I can't.
So then I guess the next, the next question would be, when do you think you'll be ready to comment?
Probably in the next two days, you know, assuming Mr. Kellard's available and, and we can talk to the, the engineer. He's just got a family emergency, so I have not been able to, I have not imposed on him. Might I suggest that you continue the public hearing for thirty days? If you feel that that is not enough time, then you can request an adjournment to another date where you have, where you feel you can submit by. Right, and if we could just, so that it's a benefit of everybody in the room, what that date would be and what the submission deadline would be, if you have it readily handed. Two eighteen.
And to help you guys out, if you wanna meet with me, and your surveyor and your engineer, to go over all of this?
Set three seventeen.
February twenty-fourth is the deadline for the March seventeenth meeting.
Is that too far out?
Well, the, the, the most, the closer deadline is February tenth, which I don't think will give them enough time.
Yeah, no, right.
Because we have the submission deadline, particularly since the public wants to review the plans as well.
Yeah, I think that's right, I think that's fair.
Right, I think it would be hard for us to meet that.
Hey, Dennis, that timeline would allow almost the, the amount of time you need for the spring flowering and everything else, so that I think that the, you know, that work can be done, because I can't imagine that even if we, everything gets approved in, in, uh, in that timeframe, that construction would be underway there and miss the flowering season, okay? So if that, we can do that.
I think one of... Be cognizant of it, so I appreciate that, thank you. One other thing I think is, is, um, with part of the planting plan, uh, post-construction on the common driveway, is we should have some sort of understanding when that timeframe is, because it would be beneficial probably to do that earlier and sooner in the process, so that we have a chance to, or the applicant has a chance to plant while it's still in the planting season, not the midsummer, not the fall, again, we miss a whole season, after all, it's, it's part of their homes. So, just a thought, I mean, I think if you could do that and incorporate that in, in the plan, and it might be that we, uh, wanna see that front-ended before you really start the construction.
Well, wait a minute, you may end up having to rebuild the entire driveway, and then you might end up destroying a lot of the planting you do when you go to rebuild the driveway. Yeah, that's something I think, let's let these guys think about, because it sounds like if with all these utilities, that driveway might end up getting some work done to it.
Right, and I, and I also wanna emphasize for the applicant, you know, when we talk about the utilities, the phone, the cable, the gas, anything, any utilities that are underground, understanding that, you know, the utility company, companies, the telecommunications, they're all independent companies, but to, as best we know, where their existing lines are, I think it would benefit for the overall project. I, I assumed you meant all utilities, not just water service. So, so let me just ask, so the February tenth submission deadline, I mean, it's possible, and our client would like us to at least explore the ability to meet that deadline. That's a March third meeting. That's a March third meeting. Can we put it over to February, to March third, and I will let you know in writing? Yeah, we will know by February tenth. Next several days, right, I'll, I'll let, let you know well before that, I'm anticipating. All right? So, so we'll do that just for calendaring purposes? So it would be March third, and then the alternative, March seventeenth, all conditioned on us being able to submit the material in time?
Right.
And I understand you're also interested in, as part of this, in kind of a, a construction program? Yep, and, and a description of how access would be maintained, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so I understand that, that's another component of what you're asking.
And more importantly, how access will be provided at all times to the adjacent property owner.
Right, that's what I was saying, right.
Throughout all construction.
It's not just landscaping, it's not just, um, utility location, it's, it's also the construction process and how, what, what we will be doing to keep access available on the common driveway.
Construction sequencing.
Yep, right. All right.
I have a question, Bob. In such a document, usually this comes, that comes a little later in the game than, you know, the beginning, so would we look at that as, as a draft plan? Is that what that would be, the construction sequencing and everything?
I don't see why, once you get the as-built information of all the utilities and everything, they can't come up with a good construction plan.
Okay.
Just once you have all the as-bills, that's your base map for your design, and give it to Kellard, and they get to figure out where they're gonna put that water service, and once they figure out where this water service is, and the impacts, they can make a narrative go hand in hand with where the water service will be constructed.
Right, and this is a special case, because we do have, you know, it's a, it's a long private driveway.
Especially if you have two other properties working off that driveway.
Exactly.
I mean, and I, just, just to be clear, too, I guess I should have said this, I, I mean, I'm working under the assumption that, that the house and the site plan that we proposed in terms of improvements is a generally acceptable design. I, I mean, if not, it makes, it's gonna be hard to refine a landscape plan, it's, it's gonna be difficult to do some of the other proposal, I mean, is, is it...
Well, in my personal mind, yes.
Okay.
And I would say the same for myself.
Okay.
I'm okay with the proposal of the clearing, grading, limit lines that you're proposing,
okay.
The changes, I think we've looked at it, and I think we're, you know, I think the change in the access is reasonable, makes, makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually thought we were wrapping up tonight, but for this new request for important information.
Okay, do you have one other question?
Just get a, can I go up there?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Just get a clarification on the construction sequencing that you were just discussing. The construction sequencing for the installation of the utilities is what you're looking for, or the entire construction project?
For the utilities.
For the utilities, okay, very good, that's all I have.
And I think, you know, uh, I think given the fact that we're going from a sixteen, fourteen to a twelve-foot, uh, common driveway, I think we should also have some sort of sense and understanding of, um, you know, making sure that we're, we're limiting the inconvenience to other households on, on the drive.
Well, I think on the sequencing and the drawings for the installation of the water main, we could show where barriers are gonna be placed as, as, as it progresses down the road.
And, and what we anticipate, you know, by the way, and the kinds of things are, you know, perhaps, uh, the timing of delivery trucks, what that will be in general, to avoid school hours, that kinda stuff.
Right.
So we look at those kinds of things, uh, we look at bigger projects, but because you've got some constraints here because of the common driveway, it's of more concern.
I, I actually, um, I wonder in this case, and this would probably require the agreement of the other property owner who shares two, I guess, who shared the driveway, is the, the, the sixteen to fourteen to twelve is curious to me. Um, and I'm just wondering if there might be some agreement whereby you just take it sixteen all the way in, and do that as, and that would be a way to actually do the improvements outside of the existing, the existing roadway.
That's up to you guys, but based on the chap, appendix two, it's based on how many houses it serves. So if it's serving three, I believe it's sixteen, then it goes down to fourteen for two, and then when you got one, it goes down to twelve, that's the reason, and varies for that reason.
Fair enough.
But if you wanna make it wide throughout, that's you guys' call.
But then we have, they have to come back, if you, if you want, if we wanna do that, then you have to add all the extra development coverage to each property.
You don't wanna...
And it's, it's, it's gonna...
Yeah, you, you, it will affect, it will, and it will affect the other people's property.
It's gonna affect the other people's property and their landscaping.
What else do we have to do?
Yeah, if I just did all that planting, we would...
Okay, again, I said that.
But again, those kinds of other issues, though, during the course of your construction, or the one year, nine months it'll take to build a home, you know, we'll take a look at those kinds of things, and we may have limitations on when you can deliver, you know, heavy trucks, you know, when they come in with a block, when they come in with lumber, when they come in with sheet rock, to work around those kinds of schedules, uh, for the convenio, but to, to minimize the inconvenience to, uh, other people who are sharing a driveway.
I'm sorry, could there be a temporary, um, widening of the road for, uh, during construction in order to, I don't know, just...
We're still gonna damage, if, the neighbors are very concerned about their landscaping being damaged, access, things like that, but I think what we could do is, we could restrict deliveries, um, at cer, to certain times of the day.
Right.
So maybe deliveries at ten AM when school is all done.
Right, school, kids are out and...
Whatever has to be done before the kids come back, so that there's no trucks going up and down the road at that time.
I just, I, I get the sense...
I like that.
We're gonna work this out, I mean, the, the, the couple that left, but, uh, I think we're gonna be able to work this out, everybody says.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I think notification of the neighbors goes a long way, a lot of public relations helps.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can extend our phone numbers, or we can talk with the neighbors and, you know, arrive at a mutual beneficial plan, so that the next time we meet, there's, there's not a, a, a conflict of, everybody should be on, on the same page at that point.
We'll have input obviously from staff as well as from the public as well, so we can all work this out and get the equation set.
So I guess I'm suggesting if we can communicate outside of the board and come to some mutual.
I understand I'm supposed to speak at the microphone.
Would you?
Why, I would agree with you. I said I would agree with you. I understand I need to get up from my chair and speak from the microphone and I would agree with you.
Okay. So let's do that.
We should do that.
Okay. Good. Okay. Great. All right, so we are set for the next journey to March third at this point. And if there's a change, we'll get notification out, it'll be March seventeenth, in case you're somehow delayed.
May I ask, when is the next meeting like this so that I can attend?
Just said March, March third.
March third, not March seventeenth.
Tentatively scheduled for March third. If we can't get our materials in in time, then it would be March seventeenth.
If you want to know whether it's going to be the seventeenth, check the agenda that comes out prior to March third. If you want to know before the agenda comes out, contact the development office.
Will I receive a letter in the mail like I did?
No, you will not.
The public hearing has already been noticed, so the.
So now it's your obligation to check the website, check the agenda.
Well, we're going to be communicating anyway, so we'll let you know.
Okay. Great.
I'll bring my husband, who's the lawyer. How does this impact the HOA then? So just, there's two people, twenty-two, the Barretts, and myself, twenty-four, Hollowridge Road. There's, it's a whole HOA.
You'll have a new member.
Okay. So we'll bring the president.
We're members.
I'll make sure. Yeah, because you bought it, so you bought it. Right, all right. So you know Lauren Griffin. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Do we have to hold this open or are we?
It's, the public hearing is being adjourned to March third.
I meant to say Happy New Year, by the way.
We'll make it a happy one, maybe a little later than you thought, but we'll do that.
Thank you, Lauren. It's too late.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we have, in addition to the agenda, and this is on ninety-one Bedford Road, I'm not quite sure what the official label of the agenda item is.
Discussion.
Discussions.
Is this a work session then?
No, it is a, it is a, during ninety-one Bedford's review before your board, there were specific representations and discussions by your board regarding the color of window trim and siding and that level of detail. Elevations were approved by your board and conditioned through the resolution. The applicant has a slight change in prior to spending money on ordering windows and moving forward in their process, they wanted to make sure that they would still be in compliance with what you had requested during their review. So they're back here tonight to talk about the changes that they want to make.
Thank you very much. Okay. Take care.
Good evening.
See you soon. Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Phil Spade. Nice to see you all. I have a flash drive that has the stuff you've got in front of you that I could put up if you want, or we can just talk from the rendering pictures.
You know, it's whatever you, whatever you prefer. I think.
Let me try to show it quickly based on what you're looking at, and if you feel like you need more explanation, we can go to the Plan B.
Still like that picture best.
Yeah. That's where we want to live, right?
The color is off. Could you do something about that?
What windows?
There's a window down there. It's got black framing. So what you see in front of you are the renderings, the first two sheets are the renderings we presented August of two thousand seventeen. We talked about their certain siding colors and then the windows were going to be a dark bronze or a black.
Right. But to be clear, these are the approved.
That's the approved.
Yes, these are approved.
So the third sheet is a, what we want to do is go to a lighter color window on the second and third floors in the residential floor. Just, we're not convinced anymore that the dark windows are the ongoing thing we'd like to see there.
Is there a change in the siding as well or just the windows?
No. There was, originally when we first.
Friday.
Spoke to you Friday, there was discussion about changing the color of the siding.
The sizes are the same and the type of windows are the same.
Correct.
It's just the color, right?
The color of the frames. So going to a lighter color, the third picture happens to be, that's a Toll Brothers Development in Cortlandt Manor, just driving by, saw, wow, that looks like our colors. And in fact, they're, the siding, the trim is the exact same colors we were proposing, but they have a sand tone color for the frames, the window frames versus the black or dark bronze. So that's, that sample.
Their rendering seems to, I mean, frankly, I keep looking at it, the siding seems to be different from the siding that we looked at before.
It is the siding, the specification in the applicant's memo call for the same siding that you had approved previously.
Is this, is this is a photograph of a house?
That's exactly right.
So is this, is this the siding, the color siding?
I can show you.
Okay. Oh, you can if you like.
Yeah.
But.
But let's show a contrast.
It's the rendering which is inaccurate.
I should have let in with the fact that between rendering on the, you know, that's right, rendering on the computer, what it shows up on the screen, you know this too, right? What shows up on the screen looks great and then you go print it and you can't get the color to come out whatsoever, so.
My opinion is that, is that the photograph as the true colors, as true colors the camera is going to take.
Correct.
Is, in my opinion, better than the rendering.
Great.
For the siding. And I also, I also think that the window frames, because this is such a big building.
Yeah.
That the window frames matching the color of the siding tend to make the facade quieter.
Okay.
And to me, make it sort of less pronounced and such, since it's a big building, I think that that's better.
That's good. Okay.
I completely concur.
You concur. Now, one caveat to what we're presenting, we still would like to keep the storefront level the black or dark bronze. And so I think there's a, oh, no, I didn't, did I bring another? No.
And for what reason?
We just think it looks better at the storefront level. So here, and that's why, because I meant to attach these. This is what we presented to the board, no, I got several, I got a couple more. That's what we presented to the board for the first floor storefront. And we feel that the dark frames would actually be beneficial because there's so much trim, you know, it's on that level that to make the frames kind of a similar color would, you know, we think it's too much. So we'd like to still keep the frames at that storefront. So that's the first floor facing the front and portion of the first floor around the north side as the dark frames.
You know, I think that's, from my way of thinking, I think that's fine because you have this, this cover over the porch. It's a shadow anyway, so it separates the two parts of the building.
Right.
I think it's fine.
Yeah. And you can go around and see.
Have you seen it?
Yep, sorry.
And we actually need it to the records.
Yep. Of course.
Many places where historic, you know, building storefronts are dark frames, I guess it, it also helps it feel more transparent to seeing, you know, what's inside and, you know, yet this historic building is above and around it. So we still thought that was appropriate. And, you know, for what it's worth, we think that this is certainly, in terms of what we're talking about, the form-based code, these kinds of discussions in terms of colors and the like, I think are valuable to inform, you know, what we might do for other places.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. That was it. I can still put it up on the screen if we're fine, right? It would only take us another fifteen minutes to.
Do we have to do anything?
I'm really, I'm really fine with it now.
I just learned about this ten minutes before the meeting, so I don't know to what extent you approved anything in your original resolution. I did get a chance to look at that.
Sabrina, will this require any sort of change?
It will not, other than the elevation plan that was cited in the resolution was cited. There was no specific detailing on the color.
Well, the meeting minutes would speak to it, right?
The meeting minutes speak to it, but it's really the elevations in the plan that, you know, were submitted as amended throughout the review process are these. So I'm thinking that they would have to do a resolution to at least summarize the change that you're authorizing today so we have a complete record.
So we have to.
I don't know that you need to do necessarily a resolution, but if everyone's in agreement with what's being proposed, I think we can do it by motion to approve the plan that's been shown to you today.
The amended plan that we have.
Exactly.
Right, indicating.
That'll be reflected in the minutes and once that's filed in the town clerk's office, that is your official decision.
Exactly. So, but indicate that you have okayed the change in the window trim color for the second and third floor, but have also agreed to leave the first floor as originally proposed.
And does this need to go back before the ARB?
No. No.
Okay. Do we have such a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Very good.
We'll see you soon.
Nice to see you drop by.
Yep. Do we have a motion to close the meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.